I'm just trying to keep track because I'm not going to be able to hear you all very well when I'm recording so I'm going to have to... Oh, which question is the which person? I think I got everybody...
Fifteen and one of my...
One of your... Okay.
You are?
Good morning, everyone. Today's date is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013, and the time is now 9:00 a.m. I would like to remind everyone present to please turn off their cell phones and pagers or send them to vibrate. The council will please come to order for its special meeting, and I want to welcome everybody in the audience who is here participating today. Would you please rise and join me in practicality?
I proudly am certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With you, Mr. President, would you please conduct the roll call? Hold it. President. Benato?
Present.
Mateh?
Here.
Miles?
Present.
Chu?
Here.
Velazquez?
Here.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Here.
There is a quorum present and council may proceed with business as stated in the notice of meeting. Agenda item number one is to conduct a city manager finalist interview with Mr. John Schneider. Did I pronounce that correctly, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Schneider, and we're using WebEx, and please be aware that this interview is being conducted in open session. Are you ready to proceed, Mr. Schneider? Are you able to hear and see members of council?
Yeah, everything's good on this end.
Okay. Could we take a moment to go around the table and have everyone introduce themselves to Mr. Schneider, starting on my far left, please?
Good morning, Rod Miller, management consultant. Good morning.
Good morning, Frank Shue, councilman.
Good morning, Carol Holtley, councilwoman.
Good morning, Joel Benato, city councilman.
Bernadette Baca Gonzalez, mayor and member of council.
I'm Anthony Mateh, and I'm a councilman.
Michelle Miles, councilmember.
Linda Velazquez, councilmember.
Good morning, Mr. Schneider. I'm Lustel, city attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Schneider, the members of council will each ask you two questions, and I'm going to request that each council member identify himself or herself for you before they ask the question.
Sounds good.
All right. In the event you should have any trouble whatsoever with the audio or video, please bring that to our attention immediately, and then we'll make sure that we get the communication going correctly.
Okay, same with you.
Yes, and I do want you to know that this meeting is being conducted in open session, including this interview, and we do have representatives from the media in the audience, and I say that just so that you will be aware of all of the facts and circumstances affecting your interview. And before we begin, do you have any questions that we need to address about procedures?
I don't think so, no. I'm ready to go.
All right. Thank you very much. Why don't we begin with question number one, which I will pose to you? It's basically an introductory question. What interests you in our city manager position? And what way would the position fit with your career goals?
Well, you know, I have not been to Trinidad. I think I'm probably like a lot of people. I lived in Colorado for a long time. I drove by on I-25 but didn't come in, but I've done research on your community, and I'm really impressed with the historic downtown, impressed with the old Victorian homes, impressed with all the history that exists there, impressed with the location. I'm really kind of intrigued by, you know, southern Colorado and then northern New Mexico with the mountains, you know, not that far away. Climate, I think, you know, would be terrific. As far as a position, you know, I've been a city manager for, you know, over 20 years. I've been an assistant twice for about two and a half years each, and, you know, being a city manager is, you know, what I think I'm best at, and at this point in my life, you know, it's really what I want to be is a city manager. So, you know, I guess the...I see the challenges there as, you know, being financial like they are in a lot of places, and the financial then relates to economic development, and, you know, both of those are really strengths of mine, so, you know, I can help in both areas. You know, I've got a long list of accomplishments when it comes to economic development, and, you know, the biggest thing that you do with economic development is based on the assets of the area, and obviously you have some very unique assets there, and you also base it on partnerships with other organizations, and, you know, if those partnerships don't exist, you have to develop those partnerships. So, and, you know, I told Mr. Miller this when I interviewed with him, you know, I have an interest in coming back to Colorado. I've got friends in Colorado. I've also got a son that's married with a little baby in Grand Junction, and I know that's a long, long ways, but it's a lot shorter than Florida to Grand Junction.
That's true. Yeah, Grand Junction's a beautiful area. Would you describe for me your budgeting and financial management skills?
Well, as city manager and as assistant and deputy city manager, you know, I've been responsible for the development of the budget, been involved with development of different types of budgets. You know, everybody seems to be the most comfortable with a line item budget, but a program budget is also, you know, very beneficial when finances get really tight. But, you know, mostly it's working with the department heads and, you know, hashing out a budget, and then hopefully presenting it to the city council in such a way that, you know, you can understand what it is that is included and are able to ask the questions that need to be asked, and we can, you know, answer the questions. Oops. I lost you for a minute.
Are we back online?
Yeah, we're back online.
All righty.
But I think that, you know, when it comes to budgeting, a lot of it is, you know, communication and teamwork when it comes down to it. I'm also a really big believer in doing five-year capital improvement programs, and in a number of places that I've been, we've involved the community in that process so that we can find out from the community, and at times what we've done is utilize a community survey to get information to also feed into the budget, to get people's input into the budget, because I think that's, you know, marketing the budget to the community is an important part of building that trust between City Hall and the community. As far as financial management, I mean, I've been involved in all aspects of financial management. Here with the city of Newport Ritchie, they...when I came on board, one of the things I determined after a certain period of time was that they were headed for bankruptcy, and that was something that they didn't realize, and they didn't want to believe it, and so what we did was we did a five-year cash flow analysis for all the different funds of the city, and I think that's just a good tool, you know, when financial times are rough, because you can really...you can look at, you know, here's where we anticipate being five years from now, and so, you know, we don't have to, you know, end up making big increases on things. We can maybe make gradual increases, or we can make changes. We also did a lot of debt refinancing there. I don't know if you include...want to include union negotiations as a part of finance, but we had police and fire unions here in Newport Ritchie, so, you know, I would say in the 20 years especially of being a city manager that I presented, you know, 20 budgets to different city councils.
Thank you. And I tell you, do I have a volunteer for...
I'll go.
All righty. This is Mr. Anthony Mateh.
Good morning, John. I'm Anthony Mateh.
Good morning.
Okay. In your research of Trinidad, I'm sure you've come to appreciate or understand that in recent times we've been a bit divided.
Yes.
When Mr. Gilderubio left in May, we've had a couple of interim managers, and it's been a trying time for us, okay? With that came a very strong opinions on both sides of the issue, and I'll get off my soapbox here in just a minute and ask a question, okay? That having been said, there were strong opinions on both sides. It's the opinion, I think, of this council that we want to unify and have consensus. So my question to you is, what is your philosophy regarding consensus? Rather than have winners prevail and losers suck it up, instead, we prefer to have consensus where we build and move forward in a positive direction. What is your opinion? Kind of narrow you down a little bit, and secondly, and more importantly, what is your experience that you can speak to in building consensus in some of the places you have been before coming here?
Yeah. Obviously consensus is a really good thing, is a really important thing. You know, trust amongst council and management is critical.
Right.
You know, I've seen some different things. I've seen, you know, actual, you know, where you bring in somebody and you do some team building. Actually, I remember when I was the city manager in Matros, the council wasn't getting along so well, and we brought somebody in and just did some different exercises and things like that. I guess in today's difficult climate, what I would think might be a good next move, and I've done this in a number of my different jobs, is to bring somebody in as a facilitator and to develop a...you know, people get turned off when you say strategic plan, so I'm just going to say plan. But to develop a plan with goals that can unify the council and get the council working together in the same direction and kind of, you know, some of that, you know, you might start off with, well, we've had, you know, these disagreements, you know, for the good of the city, you know, we really need to put that stuff behind us.
Right. If I may interrupt, council is unified. That's not the issue. I'm talking about the community.
Oh.
To get consensus between different factions within the community each...there are many opinions, but all of them are valid, but we have to unify that so that we're all moving in a single positive direction.
I see, okay.
I'm sorry.
I misunderstood the question.
Okay.
Well, you know, I guess you look at different forms of community outreach involving the community in, you know, different aspects of city business.
Right.
You know, that can be all the way from, say, you know, doing...and I don't know if this would be scary at this point, because I do understand that there's, you know, some controversy there, but, you know, it's not the right time of year, but, you know, some kind of social get-togethers with the community and create opportunities for the community to get involved and, you know, maybe, you know, kind of change the agenda. You know, we have one agenda right now which sounds like, you know, it's stirred up and is not going away. You know, maybe the planning process, maybe it's done in such a way that you involve the community on the front end and get community input on the front end so that, you know, they, you know, feel like you're listening and you do want to hear from them, and somehow you have to change the agenda.
Right.
You know, to something more positive.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
And do we have a volunteer for the next question?
Mr. Schneider, this is Michelle Miles, I'm a council member and joined council just last fall.
Michelle, could you speak up a tad?
Yes, I'm Michelle Miles, I'm the newest council member here. I've been a council member since last fall.
Okay.
Can you hear me well?
I can, thank you.
Good, good, thank you. My question is, I'm sure you've done a bit of research on Trinidad, and Trinidad faces many challenges. One of the most prominent is a very large-scale capital improvement project on our North Lake Dam, and it's been something that's been festering for some time, and it's gone through some delays, and Trinidad also has a history of a large-scale capital improvement-like project. It was a repowering of a coal-fired, fluidized bed facility, which started out...
I'm sorry.
Trinidad has a history of not doing well with large-scale capital improvements, okay?
Right.
We're a member of the Arkansas River Power Authority, and over the past 10 years, that project has gone more than 100% over budget, and it's now standing at a total cost of $172 million, which is a big burden on this city. We want to know that the North Lake Dam is not going to turn into something like that, even if it's just percentages over. It's a much smaller scale project than the power plant, but this community is stinging from cost overruns and loosely managed large-scale capital improvements. Can you give us a sense of any large-scale capital improvements that you've managed, even if they aren't on the scale of the coal-fired power plant, and your successes in that regard?
Michelle, is this project being managed by the city?
City is overseeing it and has budget responsibilities for this task.
But does the city have project management responsibility?
Oversight of project management.
Oversight of project management. Well, I guess I would ask, you know, how good is your project management?
Well, the case...
If you hold the purse strings and you're not happy with the project management, do you have any control over the project management?
Well, we do as far as holding them accountable and managing the relationships with intergovernmental agencies. It didn't work, so we were a board member of ARPA and didn't exercise a great deal of control over that process, and I'd like to know with you as a city manager, what sort of due diligence, what sort of second guessing, what sort of reading the tea leaves, getting your radar antennas up and understanding that there's a problem with management before it gets too late. Do you have any experience doing that?
I'm trying to think of a similar situation that I've been involved with. I don't know that...I've been involved in, you know, one exactly like that. I've been involved in, like in Matros, we did a...it was a half-million-dollar bypass around the city, and we weren't happy with the project manager, and we got rid of the project manager. Got a new project manager that moved the project ahead. This sounds...is this more of an intergovernmental relations?
No, not so much at all. It is inter-community, and a lot of members, you know, as far as the power plant, had to make decisions to understand, well, when do you not put bad dollars after good? And they didn't do a really good job of it, and various, you know, members of city government and city staff were involved in making sure that due diligence was done, and I think the community is stinging from the fact that it was realized way too late that the project was just being mismanaged and had lofty goals that couldn't be achieved. And maybe you can talk a little bit about your bypass and what your thought process was in making that very difficult decision to boot your project management.
Well, it was really...it was a business decision. You know, they didn't meet schedule, there were, you know, cost overruns, and, you know, we didn't want that, and, you know, I've certainly been involved in other situations like that, but, you know, I think what I would do would be to jump into it with both feet and, you know, come back to the council with a recommendation as to, you know, what the best thing to do is. This is...I'll be honest with you, Michelle, this is an issue I didn't really find any information on in my research, so this is the first time that I've heard of the issue. Sounds like a huge issue.
Really, my question gets at the heart of, in certain circumstances, things get out of control and the community gets really upset before city council or the city manager takes action. In your situation with the overpass, were you at least able to preempt the situation such that it didn't get out of control as I'm suggesting we faced in the past?
Yes, we did, and the reason that we did was because we had a specific budget, and we didn't have more than that, and we didn't want to spend more than that, and we had... the majority of the money was federal money that we had gotten through a earmark from Congressman Scott McGinnis at the time, and, you know, the feds don't really like it too much when you go over budget. You know, they're not going to pay for any of it, it's going to be you, so, I mean, it really comes down to, you know, making people accountable, and, you know, I mean, if somebody's not working out, they're, you know, they're not working out, and you need to make a change.
Sounds like you apply a great deal of common sense to this situation. Let me move on to my second question, or do we...are we doing one or two?
Okay.
Okay, because you know Trinidad is a community that's suffering from a difficult economy in southern Colorado, and time is kind of of the essence here. Do you have a sense of what your priorities would be for your first 90 days in the job?
You know, my priorities would be, and I'll say this, but because of the way that I am, I may end up doing something different, but, you know, my priority would be to get to know people in the community. You know, that would be, obviously, you know, lots of sit downs with the council, you know, going out to public works and shaking hands and introducing myself, going out in the business community, going out to different groups, things like that. At the same time, you know, I hear what you're saying about economic development, and so I think it would be critical to focus on developing relationships with the economic development-oriented groups. I don't know how good the partnerships are between those groups, but, you know, that's really, you know, at the bottom of good economic development is partnerships, and so, you know, get to know those folks, maybe, you know, maybe there's a need to have a meeting once a month of all the key economic development people in the community so that we can talk about, you know, how can we make this work? You know, because, you know, the federal government and state government, you know, pretty much aren't there anymore to help small communities, you know, it's a pull yourself up by your bootstraps kind of approach that's needed, and so, you know, that means that you need to work together with, you know, the other economic development groups. Along with that, you know, I would digest, you know, everything possible that's in writing, you know, as far as plans, reports, you know, charter, town code, city code, you know, to get to know the community that way so that, you know, I begin to develop some expertise when it comes with the community, but I think that, you know, in the back of my mind, I mean, I...there's no doubt in the research that I did that, you know, the economic development is a key issue, and so I... And so I probably have a hard time, you know, not drifting in that direction and working on economic development-type issues and looking for, you know, opportunities. And there's some really simple, you know, tools that you can use to start off that don't take a lot of time. So... Does that answer your question?
And it does, and there's another city council member that's going to go into economic development a little bit more with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Snyder, Linda Velasquez. How would you describe-
I can barely see you.
You can barely see me? Okay.
I can see half of you. Now I can see all of you.
How would you describe your management style?
I would describe my management style as team-oriented, which is in all, pretty much a participatory management style. But, you know, I like, you know, to think of us as a team. We all have our different roles. If we all do our jobs, we're going to be successful. Along with that, I'd also say that I'm what is called a contingency manager, which means that there's times when, you know, if participatory management doesn't work, that, you know, I'll use what I need to use to get the job done. You know, that said, you know, I'm not talking about micromanaging people. I'm not talking about being autocratic. I'm just talking about when you run into a difficult situation where, you know, somebody doesn't want to play by the, you know, the values that I would associate with teamwork, that, you know, I keep open the option of, you know, other options. But, you know, that's, doesn't happen very frequently.
I have one more question for you. How would you maintain good council-staff relations?
I think that a lot of it has to do with the information that we provide to the council and how we present it. So, you know, I would want us to present information to the council in a very professional way. And the goal there is, you know, to, you know, to develop trust. And the other thing that I would like to do, and, you know, it would probably take a little bit of time, but is with that plan that I talked about, is, you know, to develop that plan. And, you know, I wrote a really nice strategic plan for Newport Ritchie. I didn't facilitate the meeting, we had an outside facilitator come in. But then I wrote the strategic plan. And the strategic plan then held us, the staff, accountable to the city council to accomplish the things that need to be accomplished, like, you know, the project that Michelle brought up. You know, that would most likely be a goal. And it would have a timeline, and it would have who's responsible. And then we would report to council, you know, when that's to be completed. As far as council-staff relations, you know, I'm fine with council talking with staff as long as council isn't, you know, giving direction to the staff. And, you know, I'm all for any kind of actions that we can do together that, you know, help to build, you know, teamwork. Because that's really the way that I see it, is that, you know, we're really the Trinidad team. And, you know, we all have our role. Council's role is primarily the policy role, you know, the big-picture role, you know, really the most important role of anyone. And then minus to, you know, implement the policies of the council and the staff, you know, then it works for myself. But, you know, I think that, you know, if we, and I'm talking about myself, and yourselves strive for open and honest communication and are successful at that, that will trickle down within the organization as well. You know, that becomes then a part of the culture of the organization. So, and, you know, it's really, you know, I don't know. There was the one question I got asked about consensus in the community. And, you know, one of the things that is really critical, because Trinidad has about 100 employees.
About 150.
About 150.
Okay, 150. I mean, the best marketing tool available for the city is really the staff. Because the staff is out there all day, or some of them at least, you know, talking to the community. And so, you know, getting the staff on board, you know, getting the staff to buy into, you know, what's going on and why is pretty important. Because, you know, they can be out there, you know, potentially actively, you know, working against the best interests of the city. Now, I don't know what the situation is, but, you know, I've certainly seen that plenty of times. And that's why it's so important to have, to get back to this question, why it's so important to have those good relations.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Snyder. My name's-
Good morning.
My name's Councilman Jopinato. I noticed on several occasions here this morning that you mentioned about economic development. And I'm a firm believer in economic development. And my question for you today is, what experience do you have with economic development?
I have a tremendous amount of experience in economic development. Starting with really my first job, which was, I was a circuit rider manager and planner for Granby and Grand Lake. We developed a public-private train depot for Amtrak. And I took the lead on that and was able to get that done. In Windsor, where I was assistant city manager for two and a half years, I helped to get started the trail that goes around Windsor Lake. Form economic development because it ties to the downtown. In Fruta, I don't want to brag, but I really feel that I was responsible along with the council for turning that community around. You know, Fruta was not a prosperous community, and in fact, it just lost about 400 jobs when I got there. And one of the first projects that we worked on was a two-and-a-half-million-dollar regional paleontology center. I don't know how many of you have seen that out there by the Colorado Welcome Center? No? No, okay. Well, anyways, we got the land donated, and we put 10% of the money in. We got the rest of the money from grants, including $650,000 from, oh, the senator that was from Magnosio. I can't think of his name, Ben Campbell. And, but we, and at the same time we did that, we did a corridor plan to develop tourist commercial development. And we got the dinosaur museum, which was a moneymaker for us. And then we got about $20 million in tourist commercial development surrounding there, including a state park with a lake and a state patrol office. Then we moved, we started, we doubled our revenues in the city. So we, all of a sudden, we went from poor to, wow, we can pay off the bonds and we can start to do things. And so we did a downtown revitalization project. We also did a downtown revitalization project in Granby. But we did a downtown revitalization project, and we took the old elementary school that was 1912 and 1935 that had been abandoned by the school district and turned it into a civic center. And that became an anchor for downtown. We also, we did a lot of tourism-type things. We did a mountain bike festival. We did a kind of funny festival, Mike, that had this chicken. I'll tell you the story when we have more time. You know, one of the things I'm really proud of there is, you know, talking about partnerships, I led the effort to develop the Dinosaur Diamond, which, the Dinosaur Diamond is a 350-mile circular route tour of Colorado and Utah. And we had 50 different partners involved in that. And we got designations in both states, Utah and Colorado, and we got national, and we got grant money to help develop it, and we were the focal point. So that was really a huge help for us. Industry-wise, we brought in a Fortune 500 company, John Smithville there, had a couple hundred employees. So I'm just, a lot of economic development in Fruta. We really, and Fruta became a place people didn't want to live, became the place people wanted to live. And it started to really grow. And, you know, even today, they built just recently a recreation center and a new library. So, you know, the economic development there really paid off. In Montrose, we worked with a developer on the south end of the city to do a large commercial development, and that really paid off. We got numerous big-box stores in there. We worked with the Tom and Telluride on air service. So we have the big airport in Montrose. We get a 10,000-foot runway. Telluride had just a small little airport that was really scary to go into. And so people flew into Montrose, so we subsidized the airfares. And also, there was some industry, you know, I don't want to take credit for the industry, except to the extent that the world and city had, because we had an Economic Development Council that we worked with. They were our partner. So, let's see. In Palm Coast, I oversaw a 1,500-acre community redevelopment area where we got some big-box stores. In Eustace, you know, my job as deputy city manager was economic development. And I oversaw development of the downtown plan, development of a community redevelopment agency plan, oversaw the downtown project, oversaw a huge, about, I want to say $5 million downtown stormwater project, a wayfinding signage program, a branding program for the city. And in Newport Ritchie, you know, honestly, the economy, you know, is so bad here that there haven't been tremendous opportunities. We've worked with developers, tried to keep some projects moving, and that's been about what we could do. So, you know, things are really, I mean, this city is, you know, a step from bankruptcy.
Mr. Snyder, you know, our little community here is highly, it's rich with history, such as our coal mining industry, our old buildings and stuff like that. My question for you, have you been involved with historic preservation efforts?
Oh, absolutely. Have gotten the historic preservation grants. We had, for the civic center in Fruta, I don't know how many of those grants we had, but we had quite a number of those. And in Montrose, we had, we had some with City Hall as well. So I have been-
Do I have a volunteer with me for questions? Or Ms. Bolton? Good morning, Mr. Snyder. Thank you for your interest. Thank you for your interest in Trinidad. I'm Carol Bolton. My first question for you is how would you ensure transparency of city operations and financial transactions?
Well, I think you'll find that I'm pretty much an open book. And I believe in transparency. And, you know, it's a cultural thing, and I, you know, people, I think, have, you know, different perspectives on transparency. But, you know, to me, you know, there's not reason, you know, not to share. I mean, you've got to use common sense. I mean, when- you know, not to share. I mean, you gotta use common sense. I mean, when you're in the middle of something, it may not be appropriate because you have to do what's in the best interest of the city. But, you know, I would be open, honest. And, you know, that's my style. And, I don't know. Can you repeat your question?
Sure. How would you ensure transparency of city operations and financial transactions?
Well, you've got your website. You know, I think there's more that can be done with the website. You know, I don't know how much the city does in the way of press releases. But, you know, I think that that's always a good idea, especially when it comes to the budget, to get the word out. This is a little bit off the subject, but I really, I really think that community surveys are a good tool to get information from the community as to what they want. And then when you're transparent, you know, that makes them happy. When it comes to financial matters, you know, I think it's staff's responsibility to do a good job of articulating the budget. And, I don't know, do you, do you get financial reports periodically?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But the other, the thing that I've done in several cities is coffee with the city manager, which has always been very popular, gets a lot of people out. And, you know, they will come in and, you know, ask you the tough questions to find out what's, what's really going on. But, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question is, it's kind of near the point. What are your salary and employment contract requests or expectations?
On the salary, I would really prefer to hold off. I mean, I haven't even had an opportunity to see the community.
I understand.
So it's, it's pretty difficult to say. And as far as contracts, you know, I'd be looking for, you know, some reasonable amount of severance pay if, you know, it was decided that you didn't want me anymore.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mrs. Shu, would you like to ask your question, sir?
Yes. What experience do you have with public utility services, power, light, water? Have you done any work with that?
I have done water, sewer, irrigation, but I have not done power.
About natural gas?
I have, I've not done natural gas. I don't think I'd have any problem, you know, managing that. But, you know, I haven't had that opportunity.
Under what circumstances have you left your last job?
Quite honestly, with my last job, it got to the point where I did not feel that I had the support of the majority of the city council. There was two elections during the period that I was here. And there was, I would say, a backlash to my discovery that the city was going bankrupt and being transparent about that. That really angered some people. They didn't want to be transparent about it. You know, they wanted to sweep it under the rug, like it was just going to go away. And I knew that there was actions that needed to be taken to deal with what needed to be dealt with. And I didn't believe that I could perform my duties as a city manager with them wanting to, you know, basically sweep under the rug what, you know, is really, I think, inevitable. And that's for them to go bankrupt. You know, already, you know, they, when I first got here, they have a community redevelopment agency. That's already gone under. That went under with, they're on a federal fiscal year. So that's already gone under. And the only hope is if they can steal enough money from the utility, and they're not averse to that. But then the utility gets into trouble and then they've got every single fund basically in jeopardy there. And I don't, I didn't think that was right because our utility, our water and sewer, we served a population of about 45,000 people. And so to be taking money, you know, from the utility, because it was going to need about a million dollars a year, a million and a half a year, or two million a year, to take that from the 45,000, from people that didn't even live in the city, to balance the city general fund, I didn't really think was appropriate. But my guess is that that's where they may try to go if they can legally find a way to do it. But I just, you know, didn't have the support. It was just becoming too frustrating. And, you know, being honest, you know, my evaluation would have been in November. I left October 9th. My valuation would have been in November and probably a decent chance I would have been terminated. I don't know that for a fact, but, you know, I know, I know there was three out of five that, you know, were angry about, you know, some of the transparency. That's why, that's why, you know, it's so funny. When I got hired by them, oh, transparency, transparency, transparency. And then the minute I got hired, it was transparent. It was like, oh, no, no.
What was, what was your solution to the problem of the town as far as going financially broke?
Well, my, my solution was, you know, it wasn't pleasant. It was to lay people off. You had to cut the budget. And, I mean, that was the other thing was, they asked me to cut the budget by 10%. I worked so hard to cut the budget and I cut it 6%. And that was laying off about, I'm going to say 12 or 13 people. And, you know, nobody likes that. So they ended up, they ended up taking it back and only cutting it 3%. So, I mean, it was really a matter of you gotta live within your means. It's kind of like the federal government. You gotta live within your means.
Thank you very much.
Anthony Mckay has one more question for you.
I got one more.
In the past few years, we've had more city managers than CU football coaches. How long of a commitment can we expect from you to our city, first part? And what assurances do you want from us?
Well, you know, I think that the city manager, you know, you really don't want to go anyplace and be there for less than five years.
Thank you.
So that's, that's what I would be looking at.
Okay.
Assurances from you, I think the most important thing would be, you know, to have open, honest relations, you know, to negotiate in good faith if we get to that point. And, you know, I probably want to get out to the community and see the community before, you know, we were to proceed with anything.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
We have asked you a lot of questions. And I appreciate that you have been very deliberate and forthright in your responses. But I'd like to give you an opportunity to ask us any questions that you feel we may be able to respond to and help you assess whether you would be a good match for Trinidad.
Okay. How, how, how do the economic development groups work together right now?
I will have to be frank with you. We need considerable collaboration and new ideas in that regard. But there are good signs. We have commenced communication with the county. And there is a real, real positive climate that will promote efficiencies between the city and the county. And the county has a new administrator. And the city is looking forward to working with the county so that we enhance that component for economic development. But right now, as it stands to date, we do need considerable work in that regard.
Okay. How concerned are you about the revenues of the city?
Well, I, I can tell you that's, that is very critical. You mentioned that we and cities must live within their means. And sometimes you have to make some hard choices to be able to live within your budget. So that is a critical component that we need to look at to ensure that what we are doing is sustainable. And I believe council is united in their position that we must strive to ensure that what city government does, how we finance our capital improvement projects, and what we do is sustainable within our means.
Okay.
Ms. Ma, I just wanted to add one thing. This is a community that has historically been very, very dependent upon natural resources. And as you know, with the difficult economy, both in this country and overseas, especially in Asia, there have been setbacks as far as revenues coming into the city due to natural resources. In particular, the new out mine is going through an on-again, off-again relationship with the city. And there are some talks about reopening it. We're negotiating water rights with them again. There are some good signs. But it all depends on what the demand for coal is in Asia. That's a bit out of our control. There have been substantial community initiatives that have gone on to try and diversify away from natural resources, in particular tourism and retirement. People moving from metropolitan areas where their house might be worth, you know, much more than they could replace it for in Trinidad. It's such a lovely climate. It's beautiful. There's a lot of recreation here. There is a desire to move away from natural resources, use that when we can in the boom and bust cycle, but also to have a more stable source of revenues than the boom and bust. And city council is very supportive of those.
Is the, is the Energy Impact Program still around?
Yes. I'm told it is through DOLA that it is available. Yes.
Okay. Because I have a real good relationship with Lee Merkel.
That's good to hear.
He's your donor guy, so I know him very well. Well, do you have any more questions, Andy?
I'd like to ask Mr. Ron Miller, our consultant, if he has a question or two that he would care to direct to you.
Thank you, Mayor. John, could you discuss your approach to conflict resolution?
I think it's, you know, it's a lot about listening. And, you know, when I say listen, I don't mean, you know, just the words, but to what is really meant. You know, what, what, you know, you really think the person is trying to say. And, you know, obviously, communication is, is the essential ingredient there. And, you know, I like to approach it from a, you know, a non-emotional basis, you know, from a business perspective. And, you know, try to come up with, you know, a solution that works. And, you know, to be creative and to think outside the box. And sometimes that means that you can't come up with a solution, you know, right away. You know, you know, there's an old thing, you know, let me sleep on it. Or, you know, let's, let's think about it for a few days, or let's get together again in a week. And, you know, there's also, you know, getting other people's point of view. But, you know, add its essence, you know, I think it's communication. I think it's, you know, always, always being respectful of the other person. You know, and walking away, you know, as friends or, you know, as, as, you know, people that get along. So. That's how I'd answer that, Ron.
Okay, thank you. One more?
Yes, sir.
How would you go, excuse me, how would you go about conducting an organizational assessment? assessment?
Well, you know, I think there are different levels that you can do an organizational assessment at. As a city manager, you know, depending on the situation, you know, it could mean, you know, trying to meet with every single employee and finding out what's on their minds. You know, that's not always practical, though. So, you know, it may be that you pick a sample of employees from the different departments and, you know, try to assess, you know, what's going on in the different departments. And, you know, part of that is certainly, you know, what the, you know, what the staff thinks and where they're at, you know, versus where the department head thinks that things are at. And, you know, the rapidity as to how quickly you approach it is really based on how much of a priority it is. You know, another approach that you can take, and I've done this different times, is simply to survey city employees on how they feel on multitude of different issues, and tell them if they want to, they can leave the survey anonymous. Because a lot of times, you know, they're not gonna put their name to something if it's gonna come back to them that they said this, or they said that. But, you know, if you're gonna embark on an exercise like that, you have to be willing to, you know, take that information and then over some period of time, you know, deal with it. So, but, you know, it may be all, it may be all good. But, and, you know, the feedback, I think you can feedback the good and, you know, have a conversation with the employees and feedback the good and say, at the same time, we got some weaknesses, and these are some things that maybe we need to work on. And, you know, if, say, there's two or three things that are identified that need to be worked on, I mean, potentially, you could, you could set up some committees of employees to, you know, work on those issues. So, just an idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I'm sorry, my tongue got sideways. Are there any other questions from council? Yes, our city attorney, Mr. Les Downs, has a question for you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, good morning. I'm sure you can't see me because you couldn't see council in the Velazquez, but that's a good thing.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Schneider, my name is Les Downs, I'm the city attorney, and I know you can't see me, probably, but that's a good thing. Just kidding. Mr. Schneider, a good deal of your background information was just provided to council this morning. And in anticipating some of their concerns or questions, in this information, they really have not had a chance to look at, I wanna give you a chance to explain the manner in which you left your last job. And I'm looking at an article from the Newport Ritchie Patch dated October 3rd of 2012, and it says that you basically, when you decided to leave, you didn't show up for work for basically a month. And it says that you had decided essentially, that you and council had decided to part ways, but that you basically just stopped coming to work. Is that a fair characterization?
No, it's not. No, I took leave.
Okay.
I took leave and the council was fully aware of it. I had an acting city manager.
Okay. But, I mean, you, you were gone, I guess, in September, and then simply, you were basically done as the city manager for Newport Ritchie. Is that fair to say? I'm trying to give you a chance to explain. It doesn't really seem to be a very positive reflection in how, how the job ended for you. So, I'm trying to give you a chance to explain how you kind of physically just didn't come to the job anymore.
Like I said, I took leave. Initially, there was some medical leave. And, and then I took a small amount of leave to decide if I wanted to go back or not. And that's pretty much it. And I think I pretty much explained, you know, the atmosphere with the council. And, you know, they've gone into a mode of, you know, they haven't hired anybody, they appointed the librarian as the acting city manager, because they really don't want a city manager. They want somebody that they can, you know, that will do what they want. And now they've decided that they're not gonna fill the city manager position until October, so...
Okay. And I don't mean to end things on a negative note, Mr. Schneider, I just, again, wanted to ask you about that, because it seems like it may be a question that, that people would ask as they're reading these, these news stories about your time in Newport Ritchie. So, thank you, Mr. Schneider, I don't have anything else.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schneider, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate your interest in Trinidad.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, sir.
Good day, yeah.
Oh, yes. Would you like to take a little recess?
Be great.